I will now call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM here at McDavidic Place, St. George. Good evening and welcome to the February 2023 Regular Council Meeting for the Eastern Charlotte Council. And this will be our second official council meeting for Eastern Charlotte. All of councils here tonight except for Councilor Hat. And at this point, I will ask for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
May I so move?
Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilor Lee. Any questions or comments on the adoption of the agenda tonight? If not, all those in favor of adopting the agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Conflict of interest, disclosure, this is your chance to do that at this point. If not, we move on to four adoption of minutes of the previous council meeting, which was January the 18th, 2023, and I look for a motion of council for that.
What can you do with that?
We have Councilor McQuarrie, seconded by Councilor Tid. Question or comment on those minutes? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Business arising out of the minutes, there are none, I don't believe. Delegations, there are none tonight. That brings us to seven department reports. A is general government report, and I'll go to our CAO. Jason gets it.
Thank you, Worship. So, general government report for January 23. Work continues on amalgamation of the two former municipalities into one, along with the rural areas. Some of that work includes renovations on the municipal office at School Street in St. George, closing out the municipal office in Black's Harbor, relocating staff and equipment, merging the two accounting systems, discuss discussions with union representing the two public works groups, assuming ownership of provincial building and vehicles, account mergers, financial accounts, utilities, municipal memberships, aligning, merging some of the bylaws and policies, and managing through change, so just working with staff on navigating, navigating changing roles and the changing work environment. Some of the ongoing projects include the Patrick Connors Recreation Complex, it was an RDC provincial partnership there of 475,000. Canal Beach upgrades, near incompletion, 415,000, and water and wastewater development for the industrial park expansion, 600,000 with the IBA. Planning of new water infrastructure for Black's Harbor Beaver Harbor, 678,000 for the IBA. Continuing to work on some housing development plan for the Hillside subdivision in St. George, and land transfers in Black's Harbor. And 2022, closing out, just finishing off some of the final 2022 project claims, year end finances and such. Several discussions as well as planned meetings with Department of Transportation on the role of the municipality and the rural areas. As time permits, reengage in a number of cases in dangerous sight and sightly premises in the former town and village. Housing development, working with two potential residential developers, one being at South Street and the other one out in Brunswick Street. Just really preliminary meetings right now. And meeting with the Regional Service Commission, myself and Mayor Craig attending the monthly meetings and working with them as they as well change some of their scope. We'll be putting out a request for proposal, putting together an RFP for use of Canal Beach, that should come out by the end of this month, as well as hiring, posting for one full-time budgeted position at the Public Works Gradge in St. George. And that is the general government report.
Great, thank you, Jason. Question or comment on the report from council? If not, we move on to B, which Alex Henderson was supposed to be here tonight, I guess he's not, so maybe, Jason, did you want to give that report tonight?
Thank you, Worship. So, Development Officer, Office Report, this is prepared by Alex Henderson, Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission. Planning update, the staff there were part of an information session hosted by the Department of Environment and Local Government on changes to the community planning in New Brunswick. Eastern Charlotte's planning and bylaws or amendments, rezonings, will now have to go through a process of receiving consultation for all provincial departments. The province will adhere to local planning bylaws when it is sitting provincial facilities, such as schools and government offices. Local planning bylaws will have to adhere to statements of public interest that the province is developing and be prepared by a registered professional planner, an RPP. One application for rezoning has been received at the Service Commission for Eastern Charlotte, and staff are working with the applicant to help them put together the pieces that will need to be presented to council. Development update, three building permits issued for 2023, valued over $37,000, one signed permit issued this year, and two zoning confirmations issued in 2023, and that was submitted by Alex Henderson, planning director.
Great, thank you, Jason. Any questions or comments on that, on that report?
I have a question.
All right, Councilor Dederakis.
May I ask, may I ask Jason a question?
Worship.
Your Worship, may I ask Jason a question?
You may, so, yeah.
Thank you. So, I don't know, Jason, if you would have the answer to this, but in the report, it says that there's an application that's possible, that's in the works. Do we know where it is in Eastern Charlotte yet?
No, nothing, I have not seen anything as of yet, so.
Okay.
There's a couple that we know that were leftovers from 2022. One, I think, for Latit Road, another one for Mount Pleasant. We don't know which one of those two, if maybe actually be a third, I have no idea.
Right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we move on to the fire report, and I'll call on Councilor Thompson to give that report tonight.
The fire report for Eastern Charlotte Black's Harbor, they responded to a total of six calls, and they had four training meetings. St. George, they responded to a total of six calls, and Back Bay responded to a total of one call and had one fire department meeting. That is the report for the month of January.
Thank you, Councilor Thompson. Any questions or comments in that report tonight? Councilor Dederakis.
It's on the following page, it's the pie chart, which I presume that's related to the fire departments. Is that correct?
Councilor Thompson.
Yes, it is.
My sheet's in black and white, so I can't exactly read the, interpret the pie chart. Which one is the 33%?
Do you have that, Councilor Dederakis, just hand that over to Councilor Thompson.
Okay, maybe for the next meeting, we should have a color chart, so it would be easier to define what is actually the 33%.
Worship, so 33% was representing Black's Harbor, and I think the next in line was 17%, and that was for Utopia.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments in that report? If not, we move on to the public works report, and I'll call on Councilor McQuarrie.
Thank you, Your Worship. For Black's Harbor, they've been doing their daily chlorine checks, and checking, recording their wastewater at two different locations with the flow meters. They've been doing their daily lagoon checks for the pH and DNO and temperature. They've been checking the lift, lift station is checked Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, recording runtimes of pumps and overflows. Water samples for the St. John Lab are taken every Tuesday, every other Tuesday. Sewer samples are sent to the lab once a month. Garbage pickup is every Thursday, and recycling once a month. The arena has had upgrades, new garbage bins have been installed, new stick racks and whiteboards are in place, new stair treads installed, and four new doors have been ordered. Renovations upstairs at the arena have started with new drywall being installed and painted. Also, there has been electrical work and upgrades, plus troubleshooting being done. Regular ice maintenance and cleaning of facilities after daily rentals. January of 2023, we have started the moving process of the office supplies and hardware to St. George, municipality of Eastern Charlotte. We've been out plowing and sanding the roads and sidewalks, total of nine times, with regular cleaning of storm catch basins, as we have had lots of heavy rain events. We have applied a cold mixed asphalt to potholes on a few streets. All Christmas decorations have been removed on Main Street and the municipal park. We had one water line break on Meadow Lane. Repairs have been done, and we had one power outage at the arena, and the power was notified to resolve this outage. For equipment repairs, they had to install a new hydraulic hose on the three-ton plow. Garbage truck installed windshield wiper arm and fuse for dash lights and wiper controls. Backhoe replaced leaking hydraulic fittings. One ton ordered a new winch control switch. Trackless replaced leaking hydraulic fitting and changed a couple of U-joints starting to get bad. And four, Public Works for St. George. The month of January was relatively quiet as far as transportation-related work. We concentrated on the usual schedule of jobs for the most part. The snowstorms started early, and with that plowing and salting, a few issues with the equipment had to be fixed, but nothing major, and parts were readily sourced or in stock. The only major item to address was the leak in the oil pan of the three-ton wing truck. Calls that suppliers have shown no replacement is available at the moment in North America, so temporary fix had to be made, allowing us to keep using the vehicle. A new pan is on order, but an ETA is anybody's guess. Water, the major issues we had to deal with in January were two breaks in the main on Riverview Avenue. First break was repaired on January 9th, only to have a second one appear the next morning, requiring a shutdown of the road for half a day. The old water main has deteriorated dramatically versus other lines using the same material, and has been attributed to acidic or hot soil. Plans have been made to replace some of the main in the spring until the rest of it can be done. With the repairs to the main, a boil water order was issued for residents on that section of Riverview Avenue. We had some background bacteria show up in water samples, after which we took steps to chlorinate the wells and then flush and remove the affected water. After discussions with the St. John Lab, it was determined the bacteria showed no potential harm and can be taken care of with the normal chlorination procedures at our production well. Lift station pumps continuing to cause issues with our stations. We had to remove another pump from Station Number 11 this month and have it sent away for inspection and a quote on repairs. We are waiting for the new pump to come for Station 6. Wait times are still an issue for many items. That's the reports for the two public works departments.
Thank you, Councilor McQuarrie, I appreciate it, you did a great job tonight. Question or comment on that report? There's two, two, four reports, I'm going to go to Councilor Dederakis.
I'm not sure if this is a question directed from Councilor McQuarrie or for our clerk. So, I noticed that for St. George, we use salt, but in Black's Harbor, they use sand. Now that we're Eastern Charlotte, should we be consistent in what we use, or is there a reason why, is there one that's more cost-effective or environmentally friendly?
Where's that? So, Black's Harbor has no place to store salt. We use, we have a bit of a partnership with DTI and their salt dome, so keeping salt open, exposed to the elements, it just dissolve quickly. So, I'm sure if there was a salt shed in Black's Harbor, they'd be using salt a little bit more frequently, especially when it comes to, you know, Wellington Road. There is a small amount of salt that we get in, but it's mixed, it's always mixed. So, we have some streets here in St. George that are primarily salt, you know, Portage, for example, and Carlton Street, the majority of those ones there are hilly streets, are salted fully, so. So, yeah, I guess it really comes down to just having the equipment, you know, Black's Harbor without the proper equipment just cannot keep as much salt on hand.
I'd just like to add to that as well, most of the streets in Black's Harbor, the main streets in Black's Harbor are done by the province in New Brunswick, so there is salt being used a fair amount in Black's Harbor because of the main arteries are done by the province. Okay. Well, I'm sorry, Councilor McKay.
I just have a question. Councilor McQuarrie was talking about the soil being acidic. What would be causing the soil to be acidic? Is it the salt, or what, like, that's causing water mains to break?
We have just naturally acidic soil here, so we'll get that often, you know, that's a mixture of granite, and we've found that in certain spots, especially the old steel pipes are rusting out quicker. You know, with that, that break, you know, it's like early 1982, 83, and we're noticing that really even other municipalities that were purchasing pipe for that time period are all finding the same type of faults, so, you know, was it just some bad steel that hit the New Brunswick market? You know, that's probably more likely what it is, so that mixed with the local, you know, issues that we have with our own ground, it's not really a great, great environment.
Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you very much. We'll go to number eight, which is accounts paid and payable, and I'll go to our CAO at this point.
Bills paid and payable for January were 300.
Sorry, bills paid and payable for the month of January were 312,709.21 cents.
Okay, that's the report for tonight, for the accounts paid and payable, question or comment? No, I guess what I'll do at this point, council, is entertain a motion to accept it. I need a motion from the floor. Councilor Lee? Seconded by Councilor Tid, thank you. Question or comment? Councilor Dederakis.
So, I move that we postpone approving the accounts and pay and payable for the amount of over $300,000 for January 2023, until our next regular meeting on March 15th, or until after the council receives a detailed breakdown of where this money was spent, whichever comes first. As Representatives of Eastern Charlotte, we're supposed to look after the welfare and the interests of the entire entity.
Okay, Councilor Dederakis, you're getting into the debate.
I thought, I thought you said that.
You're getting into debate at this point, you put a motion on the floor, until that motion is seconded, then we'll get into debate. So, I'll look for a second or for the motion, your motion again, just keep it simple, please?
I will second it.
Okay, just, I'm going to back up and give your, your, your motion.
So, the motion is that I move that we postpone approving accounts and paid and payable.
Good. Seconded by Councilor McKay, is that, is that correct? Councilor McKay, you were seconded, okay, good. Now, we go into question, question or comment, Councilor Dederakis.
Okay, so as Representatives of Eastern Charlotte, we are supposed to look after the welfare and the interest of the entire entity. To proceed blindly without knowing where this money was spent defeats the purpose of us being here in the first place. I like to say that I'm not being dramatic, because I'm not. We have a page, just a single page, with three lines that say, for checks visa online with the amount of over 300,000, and we don't have one piece of information related to the amount of money of where this was spent, which is what we usually have presented, a full breakdown, when, where, and why.
At this point, I'm going to go to the CEO to answer some of those questions you just gave.
Thank you, Worship. So, as of right now, we certainly can, will be able to provide a little more details once we merge the two accounting systems. As of right now, we're only able to do accumulated of total. Most of these bills that we've received since January, there is no Eastern Charlotte accounting system right now. We're still running off of a town of St. George, village of Black's Harbor for pretty much everything we do. In fact, really, it's the town of St. George account that we're primarily using. So, until we get the full accounting system with Town Suite, which is where the process of doing now, once we get that, then we'll be able to come back to council and produce, produce more reports, so that's the sort of, the lack of actual reporting that typically is brought with these reports, that's the reason.
Any other questions or comments on the tabling? If not, all those in favor of tabling this, this part of the meeting tonight signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, can you, all those that raise their, raise their hands for voting to table, I just got to take a vote, okay? And that's all council, doesn't need an answer. Good. We move on to new business, and A is adoption of policies, and we move to number one, policy 012023, the human resource policy. Oh, I'm sorry, I did miss one. I jumped ahead, my mistake. Number nine, old business tonight, municipality designation. I'll just make a quick comment on that. Since last month, the next morning after, after the last meeting, we sent, we called the province in New Brunswick. Within a week, we sent a letter to the minister and our MLA as well, to make sure that we asked for it. And as of this past weekend, I was in Fredericton, and I approached the union of municipalities in New Brunswick to follow up on it as well. CAO, do you have any more you want to? Nope. So, that's where we are with that tonight. Good, that brings us to new business and adoption of policies, and number one is policy 01-2023, the human resource policy. I'll look for a motion for the floor.
I'll move to motion.
Councilor, can you, yeah.
So, whereas Eastern Charlotte is committed, committed to maintaining a healthy, safe and.
Yeah, if you can, yeah, sorry. Just back up, Councilor.
Okay, I move to motion of the adoption of the policies. Policy 012023, human resource policy, whereas Eastern Charlotte is committed to maintaining a healthy, safe, and supportive workplace for all employees that is free from discrimination, harassment, and workplace conflict, and whereas the enactment of this policy repeals the following policies. Policy 50A 2018, human resource policy for the town of St. George. Policy 16, budget travel of mayor and counselors for the village of Black's Harbor. Policy 32, proper dress code for the village of Black's Harbor. Policy 42, leave request, non-union employees for the village of Black's Harbor. Policy 47, general health and safety for the village of Black's Harbor. Be it resolved that the Council of Eastern Charlotte approves and implements policy 012023, human resource policy.
Thank you, Councilor McKay, I'll look for a second or for the floor. Councilor Dederakis? Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, passing unanimously. Policy 02 2023, the social media policy. Look for a motion from the floor. Councilor Lee.
Whereas Eastern Charlotte.
Sorry, yeah, Councilor Lee, your microphone is on?
It's on, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
I moved to motion, whereas Eastern Charlotte recognizes the extensive use of social media in our culture, it is important to create a framework to define the acceptable use of social media, and the enactment of this policy repeals the following policies. Policy 54A-2019, social media policy for the town of St. George. Be it resolved that the Council of Eastern Charlotte approves and implements policy 02 2023, social media policy.
We have a motion on the floor, seconded by Councilor McKay. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. Policy number 04 2023, liability and damage claims policy, and I need a motion from the floor. Not everybody at once. Councilor McKay, thank you very much. Your microphone, use your microphone on? Great, thank you.
Okay, so, the adoption of policy 04-2023, the liability and damage claim policy. Move to motion, whereas Eastern Charlotte is committed to the safety of its residents and guests within boundaries and services of the municipality, and whereas in the event of injury and/or damages, the injured party may request the municipality review its responsibility in the matter, and whereas the enactment of this policy appeals the following policy. Policy 55A-2020, liability and damage claims policy for the town of St. George. The Council of Eastern Charlotte approves and implements policy 04-2023, liability and damage claims policy.
Thank you, Councilor McKay. We're looking for a second for that, Council, Deputy Mayor. Question or comment on this motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, and that's passed unanimously. That brings us to B, collective agreement. I need a motion from the floor. Councilor Tid?
I moved to motion, whereas the creation of Eastern Charlotte involving the culmination of Public Works Department at the former village of Black's Harbor and the former town of St. George, and whereas the public work employees were members of two separate workforce unions, and whereas public work employees as Department of Eastern Charlotte have chosen to represent by a local QP chapter, be it resolved that the Council of Eastern Charlotte accepts the QP collective agreement for the public's work department.
Great, we have a motion on the floor, we need a second for that. We need, Councilor McKay, you're just ahead of Councilor Lee. Question or comment on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Yes, passing unanimously. Correspondence tonight, we have one correspondence tonight, and it's from Winnie Paul. Attention to the Honorable John D. Craig. Being a resident and taxpayer in St. George, I am writing to council requesting that our garbage be picked up weekly, including the blue bins. The system now is to pick up for two weeks, skip a week, and then pick up for two, leaving us, leaving us with no. us, leaving us with no choice but to store our garbage for two weeks with garbage bins overflowing and providing buffets for critters tearing the bags and scattering garbage everywhere. Now that we are one, I am requesting consideration be given to weekly pickups in our municipality the same as Blacks Harbor. Not only will this help protect our properties, but will help keep St. George clean with few critters running about. That's from, from Winnie Paul. Council, what would you like to do with that tonight? Uh, Councilor De Arakis?
I'll make the motion to send this to the public health.
Great, the health services, great. And we have a motion on the floor, seconded by Councilor Ted. Question or comment? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye? Yes, passing unanimously. So that's gonna go off to committee, folks, and the, the committee will, will look at that and, and consider that. Public presentation and appearances. Please note under bylaw EC dash zero one, section seven one, members of the public shall be entitled to address council for five minutes with no debate from council on matters of municipal jurisdiction. So anybody who'd like to come forward at this point, you may do so now. That's great. And I, all, all I need is just your name and where do you live, and, and that's all I need for the, just for the rec, just for the record.
Main Street, St. George.
Great.
I just wondered in, on the Southwest New Brunswick Commission, the planning and development, it says for receiving consultation from all provincial departments. Can, what, which provincial departments?
When, when did we get Mr. Henderson up front? He could actually answer that question. He's, he actually came in just a few minutes late. Yeah, that's all right, no, you, and you're welcome to stay up front, to stay up at the mic if you like, but.
Yeah. So, yeah, thank you, worship. I do apologize for my, I do apologize for my lateness tonight. So I wanted to stay to the end, just in case there was any questions arising of the development report. So to that question, I can respond to that, and if there were any others earlier, I could also respond to those. But with regard to the consultation, this is a new thing as of this year with the Community Planning Act. In previous instances, consultation with provincial departments was a voluntary matter. You, you didn't have to do it, but we sometimes did. For example, when the municipal plan for town of St. George was being worked on last year, we did some voluntary consultations with a couple departments on different areas that were in their expertise. But now it's changed because the province has been a little bit more engaged with local bylaws, specifically when it comes to planning. Previously, provincial department could set aside a local bylaw when it was decided to do a development. So if they were doing a provincial facility, they may have looked at your local bylaw, but they could have just set it aside and placed a school or another provincial facility wherever that department may have had land already. And that may not be the best location in the view of the municipality. So what kind of happened here is the province is agreeing for these major facilities that they're gonna work with your municipal plan that council establishes. But in sort of a trade-off, they're asking that municipalities consult with all the departments before they adopt a plan, so that there's some consensus. You don't have to get their approval, it's still a consultation. And if you put a plan in that prevents them from doing something that they deem to be required of, of some kind, and they can go to cabinet to, to supersede your plan. So that process of going to cabinet is new. Before, they could just set it aside at will. Now there's a process, and they'd have to go that route, which, which is a political decision. So that's the reason why you have to consult with these departments when you're adopting local bylaws.
Which departments?
There's a list, and what, we have a, we have a pretty detailed checklist as to when you're doing with which particular type of planning bylaw, which, which department you need to be consulting with. So there are some bylaws that are considered more minor, and we have a little bit more discretion as to which ones get put on that list, and then there's others which you have to go through every department. It's the, it's actually the provincial planning director who sets it in, sets the list, and that's in the legislation now. So it, it's something which we could talk about in detail if you'd like, but what it does is it actually just, it's about three weeks, two to three weeks that we're, we're supposed to give them for notice, and it can happen at any point during your adoption. So it, it normally takes about three months to get a, a planning bylaw passed from, from start to finish with the public hearings, at the minimum. So this is not gonna necessarily add time to your process, we would be doing that work in the background, getting those reports compiled with all their comments. So, yeah, it doesn't necessarily slow things down per se, it just adds work for me.
I just don't go anywhere yet, I'm gonna go to council, 'cause you weren't here for your report. Council, have any questions for Mr. Henderson?
Hi.
Uh, Councilor.
I just, is your question answered, Rod? That's what I was concerned about. I'm not so sure you answered his question completely.
Sorry, could you just repeat your question again?
Well, you've got, we're supposed to go, Eastern Charlotte Planning Bylaws Amendments Resilience will now have to go through a process of receiving consulting from all provincial departments. You know, what are all those departments, and who controls that? Is that you?
No, the, the provincial.
Or this council?
The provincial planning director establishes which departments you have to consult with. Paul Jordan.
And where is he?
He's in, Paul Jordan?
Where is he?
In Fredericton.
And he's under the which department?
Environment, local government. Yep. So that's established in the Community Planning Act. So this is a new process.
I thought it was, they do that?
Well, in past, that's what I was saying, is we would have a voluntary consultation, where we'd, we'd be, council would say, we need to get the advice of Department of Agriculture or this other department when we're looking at particular bylaws, and we've done that. But when it comes to your municipal plan, your big bylaw for planning, they want a number of departments consulted every time now. So that's new as of January first, to answer your question.
Thank you very much for coming in tonight.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. At, at this point, I'll, I'll, I'll give anybody else the opportunity to go to the podium and speak on anything from the municipality. And we got one, excellent. I was gonna go once, twice, three times, but, yeah. Great. So all we need is just a name and, and your address, that's all.
Jeff Wilson, Laura Latang.
Great, thank you, Jeff.
My question is, and this may not be the proper place to do this, I don't know. Counselor McCory was talking about, I guess, temporary filling potholes in Beaver Blacks area. Now, who do I talk to about the craters on the Limekill Road? About getting those filled? Is that your jurisdiction?
That would still be under DTI. We don't, we don't have any ownership of the roads at this point, so.
So I guess at the end of the day, then, what does all this amalgamation do for people outside of Beaver Harbor and Blacks and St. George?
Good question.
So, that's just.
Nope. No, I, I fully understand.
It's just a question I have, I've got craters on my road.
No, I fully understand, I, I understand the question, and, and there should be actually more people asking the same question, and I don't disagree with you, but at this moment, the DTI still has ownership of all the, the roads that they had as of last year. We don't, the Eastern Charlotte has not taken over the roads.
So I have to call the province then to possibly fill them holes? Because I see they've done some on one seven two.
Right.
On route one seven two, they filled a few, but I guess they missed Limekill. Okay, thank you.
No problem, thanks, good question. And I'm not gonna disagree with you.
Again, I don't know if this is appropriate for here either, but it's a question, I'd like to know, oh, it's Joan Craig from Penfield?
Great, thank you.
In the zoning commission, I would just like to know, are we gonna be looking at changing the bylaws for that, if that's gonna come along with you guys? Because we have a significant piece of property, and somebody else gets to tell us what we do with it and how big it has to be if we wanna rearrange that property. We're good, we're very good stewards of our property, and we don't think it's fair that we're paying the taxes, why does somebody else tell me how big I have to block off my property? And I want you to know if that's gonna be part of your, to change that. So more comes back to me, not the, not the government.
I'm gonna go to the CEO, just to give you a quick, give you a quick answer.
So as far as any of the municipal plan with local, local, like, planning bylaws, whether it's the Community Planning Act, the, you know, the rural plan, there's no, no immediate thought of changing any of those or impacting any of those. So wouldn't be on this council's mandate, no.
Great.
Why would it now be on this council's mandate? You guys took all those courses, when did that come up? Look after all the back roads?
Yeah, I get, I, I just can't get, get into the question and answer, 'cause that's not what this, this time is for. It's, it's actually now opportunity for you to speak to, to council. As far as the roads are concerned, is that, I think that's, I'm, I'm gonna give you the time. As far as the roads are concerned, the province in New Brunswick has never handed them over to us. And it's not like we want, we're going looking for it either at this point, too. And it's better, it's better they continue doing the job that they have, and let, let them continue fixing them and, and taking care of them. So, and they're, they're doing the job, so let them continue doing it. We're not, we're in no hurry to do that. There's, you have to remember, there's a, you have to remember there's a price to pay for that as well.
I realize, I realize that you guys don't have that, but her problem is with land she owns.
Yep.
So this council, like, would be under your district? So he should be looking after that? That's why I just wanna know who looks after. I know Alexis does St. George, she's a Bonnie River.
No, that's, no.
But he should be looking after her interests?
So there's a, there's a rural plan in place right now that's enacted, that's active. That's still in place today, and it's still in place, it should be still in place at the end of this mandate for this council. There's no decision because it's active, so.
So it goes back to the LSD?
That was formed when it was an LSD, yeah. So that same Community Planning Act is still in place.
So she doesn't have to do anything other than the old LSD?
Nothing. Certainly, if when we do go into doing anything, like if we were to merge into one larger municipal plan, residents would be well aware that that's starting to be undertaken.
So my question is to her, is who is coming after you to tell you who you can't block off?
Get up here. But I appreciate, I appreciate the questions, and I can say that that's what, wasn't what this was intended to do tonight, it was actually a chance for you to speak to, to council and not get into question, question and answer.
No, no, I, the only thing is.
Which is fine, and, and, and all your questions are, are good, but at, at this point, it's not council's priority to go in and change in the rules and regulations to those ideas.
But if the rules and regulations haven't been changed.
We do not plan on doing that, pardon me?
No, but if the rules and regulations haven't been changed according to Jason, then why are they changing her? Why are they dictating to her that she can't do what she wants to?
Yeah, I can say, I, I can't, we can't answer that, because we, we haven't dealt with it, so I couldn't, I can't give you an honest answer. Yeah. Okay, if, if that's all there is from the, the public, I'll move on to statements by members of council at this point. February, February is Suicide Prevention Month in New Brunswick, and New Brunswickers must remember that suicide is preventable. This is from the Health Minister Hugh Fleming. This month-long effort serves as a reminder for all those in distress and suffering that they are not alone, that there is hope in their darkest hour. Still too many families suffer from the loss of a loved one to suicide, and we must continue to work together to raise awareness and reduce stigma related to mental, mental illness. Those who are in need of help or are in distress can talk to a friend or family member, talk to their family doctor, or even, or if in crisis, please call eight one one. And there is actually a kids' help phone to, line at one eight hundred six six eight six eight six eight. Or go directly to the emergency department of the nearest hospital. Tonight, I want to, on behalf of council, congratulate our Deputy Mayor of Eastern Charlotte, ATV Region Six Director and President of ATV Club number thirty-nine, David Hat, on receiving the Queen's Platinum Jubilee Medal, given for his many years of work for so many organizations, with particular emphasis on his work with the Canadian Army Veterans Motorcycle Units. Well deserved, congratulations, Deputy Mayor. On January the twentieth, I attended the Charlotte County Multicultural Association's Chinese New Year Dinner right here at the McAdavic Place. It was a snowy evening and well attended. Actually, it was actually so loud, we ate a Chinese meal and learned a fair amount of the culture of China. Nothing but balloons, though, I don't think. Eastern Charlotte gains considerably by having the Multicultural Association in our area. Our country was built by people from other countries coming here to start a new life, and the Multicultural Association helps when people feel welcome in our area and helping them get started. On January the twenty-second, I attended, I attended the eightieth birthday party for Ernie Hanley at the Seaview Full Gospel Church in Back Bay, and I presented Ernie with a certificate of celebration on behalf of council and all residents of Eastern Charlotte. On January the twenty-fourth, Deputy Mayor Hat and I visited with Norman Wentworth here in St. George for his ninetieth birthday, which was the day before, we presented Norman with a certificate of celebration on behalf of council and all residents of Eastern Charlotte. On Thursday, January the twenty-sixth, in the morning, I attended the subregional meetings with our worship Bonnie Morris from Grandma Ann, his worship Danny Cogswell from Fundy Sores, along with our respective CEOs. In the evening the same day, I along, I along with our CEO, attended the Southwest Service Commission's Board Meeting in St. Stephen with all the other mayors, including his worship Brad Henderson of St. Andrews, his worship Alan McCackern of St. Stephen, and his worship Ken Stanix of McAdam. On Tuesday, January the thirty-first, I attended the Queen's, Queen Elizabeth Platinum Jubilee Award Ceremony, which her honor Brendan Murphy, Lieutenant Governor of New Brunswick, and our MLA Andrea Mason were conducting in Blacks Harbor. The award winners were Carolyn Bro, Tony Cook, and Michael Strong. I wanted to thank Laura, Laura Lee Carrier, Michelle DeVoo for initiating, for initiating on February the second and having a warming center available for the dangerously cold weather that was predicted for that coming weekend. The thought was that if one person was helped, it was worthwhile, having such a place ready for those who could not get into the warm areas. This would not have happened if it were not for the countless volunteers who worked in shifts and the ones dropping off food. A big shout out to the St. Mark's Anglican Church and their Minister Reverend Mary Ann Langmaide and the hub for opening their, their doors and facility to making sure all citizens of Eastern Charlotte had an option to being safe and warm. Last week, I attended the Personnel Committee on Monday evening, the Recreational Committee meeting on Tuesday, along with a working session of council that same evening, and on Wednesday evening, I attended the Fire Services Committee meeting. On Thursday evening, I was in St. Stephen for the monthly Services Commission meeting. A huge happy birthday to Dorothy Anderson, who turned ninety-five on February the eleventh. I presented Dorothy with a certificate of celebration on behalf of council and all residents of Eastern Charlotte. This past weekend, I along with Councilors Ted, McKay, Lee, De Arakis, McCory, and Deputy Mayor Hat, attended the orientation training held in Fredericton by the Union of Municipalities in New Brunswick. On Monday, I spoke at one of the first events of Eastern Charlotte at the McAdavic Place, which was a Valentine's Social. It was sold out, and Kara Hat did a wonderful job organizing this, this successful event. Anybody who wishes to help with any event coming up to the, this year, any thing going on, please contact at, at the, at the municipal hall at any time. We'd love to have volunteers step forward and, and help with any of the activities going on for the, all the rest of the year. Tonight, I also wish to take this opportunity to wish Carson Cook all the best for myself, all of Eastern Charlotte Council and staff. Carson, Carson on February the twenty-eighth will be celebrating his one-hundredth birthday. A very happy birthday to Carson Cook. On behalf of myself and the council of Eastern Charlotte, I send out our sympathies to the families of Marilyn Lewis, who passed away on January the seventeenth, Douglas Kerstad, who passed away at the age of one hundred and four on January the eighteenth, Audrey May McLeese, mother to Councilor McCory, who passed away on January the twenty-seventh, David Shelton, who passed away on January the twenty-fourth, Al Hooper, who passed away on Friday, January the twenty-seventh, Mildred Hat, who passed away on Tuesday, January the thirty-first, Bernard Pat Levitt, father-in-law. Bernard Pat Levitt, father-in-law to our CEO, Jason Gedet, who passed away on February the first, firefighter Warren Sugarbear Calder Calder, who passed away on February the third, Ellen Anita Campbell Hat, which occurred at her daughter's daughter's residence in Utopia on February the fifth. And as of yesterday, we send our sympathies out to Moore's Mills Fire Chief Steve Smith, who passed away yesterday, February the fourteenth. I'll go to our Deputy Mayor at this point for comment.
All I want to add is, we are trying. We don't have a magic wand, but we're going to do the best we can.
Councilor Thompson.
I've, on the Parks and Recreation Committee and Events, we've met with a couple of different groups about upcoming events for the summer. We are going to try to do something for every group, we just have to wait and see how much money we actually can work with. Thank you.
Councilor Dederaacus.
Jeff Wilson, you mentioned how you have potholes on Limekill Road. I just did a quick search, and I found the number that you can call, so I can give that to you afterwards, okay? So, there's that. For Joan Craig, I wonder, like, we have a, we have a number of committees that we were appointed to. I'm just wondering if her, the issues that you have, that you presented today, if that could be brought forward to one of the committees. I did a, like, I was looking at, maybe possibly, like, the Administration Committee, because it does deal with bylaws. I'm just putting that out there, and I don't know if that's a possibility, but I think, like, we should, we should communicate as best we can. And the last thing I just want to say is, I want to say thank you to Reverend Mary Langmaide and the Hub for graciously opening their doors to those in need when it was minus forty earlier this month, and to all the folks that volunteered.
Great, thank you, Councilor Dederaacus. I'm going to, Councilor McCoury.
We attended, most of council did, attended a conference in Fredereton on the weekend, and I think we learned a lot and found out some things we didn't think we knew before, so hopefully we can put it to good use.
Great, thank you. Councilor Lee.
Just a couple of things for Ward One. First of all, any of you who have traveled up Riverview Avenue are well aware of the broken water line that happened there a while back. That's not the first time for that, that's probably the second or third time, Jason, for that one water line, so there is plans in the spring to do some substantial work to change out some of those lines, so we can get by that. The other thing, we were invited to visit the Community Hall in Second Falls, up by the fire hall. Jason, Gedet, and myself went up on Monday to discuss some issues there. Apparently, there's been some problems with people in different events having to leave early because there's no wheelchair access to their washroom. And the other thing is, that would probably be true for people with limited mobility, too, because there's a sharp set of stairs going down into the fire department to go to the washroom, or is it now? And this, of course, is not acceptable in public buildings anymore, and we've just got started looking at them, and this one will have to be looked at, hopefully this summer, to do something about that. So, that's all I have for Ward One right at this time, besides saying thank you for coming out tonight. We all appreciate your interest, that's for sure, in the comments.
Thank you, Councilor Lee. Councilor McKay.
First of all, I want to say, I want to thank you all for coming out, and thank you all for getting, for the people that got up to that mic and voiced their opinions and concerns. I want you to know that your concerns are my concerns, and I can say that with the utmost confidence. I'm here to serve you. And secondly, I, once again, I want to thank everybody that made the warming station happen. That was amazing, to see a community come together. They had so much food, we didn't even use it all. It was amazing, and a few of the people were taken home and kept warm. And for those of you that don't know about our homeless community, we have one, and we need to look after them. Anyway, thank you, once again, all for coming out.
Thank you, Councilor McKay. Councilor Tid.
I also would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I'll just echo Councilor McKay and Councilor Dederaacus and his worship's comments on the warming center. It was great to see the community come together, lots of volunteers and lots of food, and it was a great experience. I just have, Personnel Committee met on January the eighteenth and February sixth. Items discussed were the policies that were accepted here tonight, the collective agreement, which was accepted here, and hiring, moving ahead on a posting, and I believe it was posted this afternoon on our website and social media sites for the full-time position for Public Works, and we'll be looking at posting in the early spring for an admin assistance position.
Great, thank you, Councilor Tid. That brings us to date and location of the next meeting. The next meeting will be Wednesday, March the fifteenth, at seven PM, right here at the McAdavic Place Community Center. And at this time, I look for a motion for adjournment. Councilor Tid? Thank you. Thanks, folks, for coming out, we appreciate it.